Ms. Williams, we're gonna get started. I'm gonna call to order the special meeting of the Coast of Mesa Sanitary District, February twenty-second. Board of Directors is present. This is the, all five of the Board of Directors are present. First item on the agenda is to take public comments. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, then we'll go directly to item two, the consideration regarding the purchase of two ninety Polerino Avenue. Scott, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under, I'm gonna start with item two A, which is the City Coast of Mesa Planning Commission Staff Report. As you know, this is one of the contingencies to acquire the building at two ninety Polerino Avenue. And this is because the city staff has to go to the planning commission and the planning commission has to make a decision that are we location on the building conforms to their two thousand general plan? And as you'll see, I gave you a copy of the staff report and the recommendation, staff's recommendation is that it does conform to the general plan and they're recommending that the commission adopts a resolution. And for public information, if you scroll down to page four on the staff report, the staff, city staff mentions the public benefit for us relocating to the new building. There's several public benefits. One of almost all these, the parking issue. Here, there's fourteen parking spaces. One of those included handicap. When we have meetings like today or study sessions, staff has to park at senior center and walk over, so we make sure there's enough parking for the board and for the public. The new, the new facility has forty-one parking spaces and there'll be two handicap stalls, so there'll be plenty of parking at the new facility. Second benefit is that the new building will also increase capacity for the public to come to our meetings. I mean, as you can see here, you know, we have, when we have the screen down, there's only four chair, chairs available to the public. Where, if a new building will, hopefully, we can have, expand to at least thirty people to come, sit comfortably in the new building. And that, and that roof could also use as a multi-purpose roof, where we can use it for, rent it up for, for nonprofit groups who wanna use the building. And then the, the third reason is that, and you'll see later in the presentation, I have the latest improvements of the building, there are, there'll be some vacant offices and, you know, we can hold onto those for some future growth in the organization. If we wanna hire our own inspector, if we wanna go hire our own engineer or any other, any other staff, we have that option. So, both of three benefits, the city staff concurred and that, that they are public benefits and that's why they're recommending adoption of the resolution, which is going on tonight as this process. I will be there if that's consent. So, if they don't pull it, when they might pull it, let's discuss it, but once it's adopted, then, then stuff to the board to make that down there. And we can talk about that once, talk about that in the next session.
Now, I know the parking's non-conforming, but two spots?
Four.
Well, it was a couple.
Like three, like three, forty-four, yeah.
And there was, city staff had recommended that if need be, they could go to smaller spots, compact.
Yeah, well, they're not recommending that in the, in the staff, in the staff report.
Yeah, I know, but it was an option.
It's an option, sure. And, and, you know, originally, we were gonna put a generator there, but I decided, you know, 'cause I don't wanna give up precious parking spaces. So, my thought was, we could put a UPS uninterrupted power supply, a power system in the IT room, and those systems can last hours to days. And my thinking was, we get a system that's long enough, that when the power goes up, our facility, what stood the operation for several hours was to give us time to bring a portable generator to the facility.
Yeah, also, right now, the zoning is non-conforming and it seems worth half. They would allow us to go ahead. We could go ahead with non-conforming, nothing else.
Do we intend to do the compact parts?
No, no, we don't.
Not on the list?
No.
Bomb supply commission.
Right. So, that's available for any questions. If not, I'll go on to ITB.
Do you need education, anybody's gonna pull up?
No, I don't need education, no.
Have you checked with, well, the discussion about engineer and inspector being in the building? We were also talking about potentially renting part of the building. Have you talked to Rob about being in that building?
Yeah, we can't do that because that, that creates a whole other issues that district council, I can talk about a study session we want to, but it's, it could, what it basically could, that was, and you're gonna, you're making, basically, rather than employing, and there's some retirement implication, curse implication by doing that, so we really can't have you in that building.
I'd like to hear it in the study session.
I would do that. You have a problem?
Chuck, you look like you want to say something.
No, I'm just, I'm just soaking it in, yeah.
Anything else for staff? Okay, let's move on.
So, item number two B is the asbestos survey report, the asbestos in left paint. So, we hired a consultant to do a survey, sampling of asbestos in the building. Bad news is there is some asbestos, but the good news, the remediation is minimal, less than ten thousand dollars, which I included the cost to do that. So, that's good. That's real good. So, most of it looks like it's beating the walls, so if we do any demos, we'll have to do some remediation, but as you said, the phone calls can be less than ten dollars.
Remediation's when we do the alterations?
Yes.
Or before?
Operations, we will, because when we disturb asbestos after it's become toxic.
Do you have any indication of these spots that were not renovating? I mean, typically, if you don't touch it.
Right.
You leave it a lot, I mean, you don't need any more.
Right, right.
We ran into that, I was trying to tend us between the office and, and we were unpleasantly surprised to find it in several offices. How will staff know in the future, twenty years from now, where the asbestos is? Is there something going to be posted someplace? You know, so the future employees aren't at risk because staff then doesn't know where the asbestos is. What, does the report show where the asbestos is?
It does, it does, it does show that.
Yeah, page seven, if you go to page seven on the report, there's actually, I think, three spots that have asbestos and there's two spots that have lead and, okay, so, I'm on page-
Your pages are different from mine.
Yeah, they are, their pages are different. So, I'm on page four.
Three point one.
Yeah, where it says, it's page four, at the top, on the right-hand side of her report.
Page seven?
It's page four.
Okay.
Okay.
As long as-
And so, there's, there's three spots that have asbestos, so we'll remediate all of those. And then there's two spot, two walls that have a certain color paint and the paint has lead in it, so the paint will be, are removed and remediated. So, it's five spots, we'll remediate everything and that will take care of the entire issues in the building. And so, it's ten thousand dollars to remediate it, we're not leaving anything. If there's nothing else to do, it will all be done. So, everything that exceeded what was considered normal limits were these five spots and, I'm trying to remember how to read this list.
I think this list was in the elec-
Anyway, it's, it's an exceeding, it's kind of a, it's kinda hard to tell on here, but it's an exceeding thing. And so, it was like conference room two, wait.
Yeah, like the coffee room and-
Yes, it's cubicle area one, that burgundy wall, burgundy drywall has it. And I think it's the storage room two, I'm on page five right now. And this, like the storage closet two.
Okay, okay, we got the report. I'm just concerned that a plumber comes in, he decides he's gonna do something and how is he gonna know there's asbestos there?
There is no asbestos, after we remediate.
There won't be, right there.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on two B?
I agree.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. So, item number two C are the tenant improvements and we put up on the screen, which is also in the staff report, the proposed improvements. So, this is what the building looks like right now. And, back in January, we talked about certain improvements, like removing these offices here, to make this the, the boardroom slash community room. This would be like a, a room for your close sessions and your public meetings. The bathrooms would have to be remodeled to ADA, make this into another conference room slash EOC. This will be like a hallway, right now, it's just two, two walls, we can make a hallway, so it'll be easy access for staff to get around. So, the first draft was presented to the city, and this is what it looked like. So, here's your, this is your big community room right here, you have, we'll bring a wall down here, and then you can, you know, have your close sessions here. This is the plan room right over here. So, when members of the public come in the office, they come here, sit down, there's a planning table right here, Dora's office will be here and all the plans will be right here. This is the first attempt for the restrooms, but we had to do some more modifications, which I'll show you in a second. And then this is the EOC, another conference room, and then we had this hallway. So, the, after the first review, the city requested some additional improvements, and this is the latest, latest one that Bob Ford met with the city last Friday, I believe it was. But one of the is additional access, exit doors, so we made one here. We closed this out, put a, put a door here as well, so there'll be two exits, one here, one here. There'll be double doors here, so easy access to, to the boardroom. There was a door here that's removed, so now we just have one door here. Here's that hallway now it's talking about. We also added a door here for Dora, so, so she can come over here. Bathrooms are modified, put a, we need to put a stove, we're gonna put a stove over here in the, in the break room. But that's, that's it. And as you can see, that's, it's a, the lobby is fully secured, there's a door here, door there, door there. So, people couldn't walk in. So, that's pretty much it. I think it's a very functional building. You have vacant office, the vacant office, one here, one here, one here, and possibly one there too, so there's, you know, again, room for growth. But it's definitely a very functional building that can meet our needs.
Where's the reception?
Possibly right, right here. If we go in here, there's a reception right here, I think it's here or here, I can't remember. Might be that one.
Scott, that was the only additional thing the city put in, the additional door.
Well, they just, they wanted to expand the bathrooms a bit more, made a little wire, and they wanted another exit door, and then they wanted additional handicap stall, and that was it.
Then it would be ADA approved?
Yes, yes, definitely, absolutely. And then, in your staff report, on there, there's, there's also a list of items of other improvements I have on there. And, please put that up, yeah. So, let me, move my staff report real quick here. So, so you go to the last page of, of your staff report, you have the Polerino proposed upgrades. So, the bullet point number one is the tenant improvements, that's what I just showed you here. All those other bullet points, those are possible additional costs that we think would, we would have to do to upgrade the building to meet our needs, you know, like the audiovisual requirements, buying some, you know, chairs and furniture for the, for the, for the community room, buying UPS system that I mentioned, you know, the power system, you know, outside monument signs, other thing, you know, another thing I just thought about on the weekend, you know, our display case for trophies, you know, we're gonna try to construct a new one, put in a lobby, you know, didn't think about that. Maybe some additional IT wiring has to be done, we won't know until, until, so, so I just wanna bring this to your attention, that, you know, what I would like to do, if we wanna move forward with this building, is to bring all this together with you, and here's this one big budget. And if you think it's too high, that we cut out, remove some items on this list, that what, you'd be comfortable what the budget should be, and then whatever that amount is, it's two hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand, whatever it is, then we can add that to, to the financing.
When do we, when do we have to determine that? Because I know these are suggestions to-
Yeah, what I'm hoping, I can get this to you in a month, is if we do proceed forward, I, I've hired a consultant, I would like to hire a consultant expert in, in planning and moving, and he would help me contact contractors and get a cost proposal for you.
Why can't Thornton have already done this?
What's that?
Thornton's an architect and he does this every day. He goes, he can go down through there. I was, you know, I'm, I'm a little dismayed that we don't have some of these costs already.
Well, it's because I don't wanna, I, I just don't wanna have numbers floating free, I wanna have hard, good numbers. And, and we couldn't, we couldn't present this plan to the contractors until the city has signed off on it. And so, that's what we had, so when the city says, okay, you're good to go, then we would show contractors this plan, they can give us some, some, some concepts.
Eighty, eighty percent or ninety percent of what you have on here didn't change from the time you had the initial concept, so, you know, the city finally approved it?
They have approved it, yeah.
Definitely. When did the city finally approve it?
Have you spoken to the city as far as the signage on the outside between the monument sign and how much we're allowed?
No.
I noticed this all added here for proposed budget, would be interesting to have it in there for a proposed budget.
Well, the monument sign, it's just one of our items, the monument sign in here, so we would, we would definitely talk to the city and come back to you what we can, what we can do with the cost of the cost.
Sometimes you're allowed, not only the monument sign, but also something across the building.
Right.
You could always have something on the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm finishing this.
Well, there's a, there's a monument sign on the outside. We just had to change the wording, you know.
I know, yeah.
Hundred dollars, you can get a banner.
Yeah.
And what about our flagpole?
We, they don't have a flagpole, it's very big, so that's why I had it somewhere.
We can't take ours.
I, no, I don't want to leave it here.
Oh, okay.
It's cheaper to buy a new one than it would be to move the old.
You have to get a new one.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna turn over two D to Mark Davis to go with the financing again.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Mr. President, board members, just recap over what we talked about here, January Board meeting. We see a couple of different options on financing the building. One is through a lease purchase arrangement with the CSDA Finance Corp. The advantages of doing this lease purchase arrangement is that it's gonna preserve your liquidity and allow you to spread the cost of that asset over its period of benefit. The, the disadvantage is that you won't own the, you know, you won't own the asset outright to begin with, it will be encumbered, and that you will need to budget your lease payment each year for the period of the lease term. We've just been talking about round numbers of four million dollars as that amount to finance through a lease purchase agreement. That's not set. Sometime after you decide what your improvements are that you want to do, then we'll refine that number. But just for discussion purposes, the last few meetings, we've been talking about this four million dollar number. So, that at a three point five percent interest rate, which is the current market rate that CSDA Finance Corp. has provided to us, that would equate to a lease payment, an annual lease payment of two hundred eighty-one thousand over, over twenty years. A second option, you know, is to pay cash for the building, you do have adequate reserves to be able to do that. The advantage is, it's gonna be your asset right out of the, you know, right from day one. The disadvantage is, it is going to diminish the liquidity of the district for other projects, ability to be able to move quickly on things, like you have that ability now with having the types of reserves that you do have on the books. One thing that wasn't in the January meeting that we did, we brought up at that time also is a potential use of grant funding for some of these types of improvements that may be available, I don't know that. That would take a little bit of staff effort to go see if there's, there would be grants that could be available for things like the ADA improvements. The downside of that, when you do get some grant funding, and if it's gonna be in federal nature, it could result in additional audit requirements for you, depending upon the amount of grant funding that, that could be made available to you.
Can you say grant funding? I mean, even things like environmental upgrade, like solar and anything we do environmentally?
There very well could be grants.
Could be grants in that area?
There very well could be. Just, staff would need to research that to be able to come back and see. Really believe that probably a combination of all three of those is where you'll end up being, once you get to that, to that point. But with that, unavailable for any questions, man.
Is there a prepayment penalty on this lease purchase agreement?
No, there's no prepayment penalty. There is, the markets usually dictate that when you go out for a long term like that, they like to have at least a seven-year period to where you're not going to either refund it or pay it off early. And so, that would be built into the lease purchase agreement. Once you reach that, that period of time, if you wanted to pay the whole thing off at that point, you certainly could.
Well, my thought is, you know, if we sell this building and wanna put that proceeds into the, you know, against the property, the new property, we can't do that if we're tied up.
Exactly, we can't for seven years. So, one of the things we talked about previously was that we would have to, you know, know that we're gonna sell the building, and so, we're gonna front some of the cash towards the purchase and then repay ourselves with the building. Or, the thing that I'm becoming more friendly with recently, is that we finance what we're gonna finance, you know, including the improvements. And then, when we sell the building, we use the, the proceeds from the building to make our lease payments, because we've already adopted our two-year budget. And seventeen eighteen is the year that we finish our sewer study rate increases. So, what I anticipate is in that late next year, sixteen seventeen or early seventeen eighteen, we'll start our pro, two eighteen process for both trash and sewer, because we'll have a couple of years of organic activity. We will, will have used down our resources. Not as fast as we intended, we haven't been doing it as fast, but we're, we're gonna get there, we'll have a couple of years. And then we'll know our lease obligation and, and that, so that we can build all that into the budget. So, I really love the idea Mark had of using the funds to make our lease payment per year, because it doesn't impact our budget at all. That's super cool for me.
Would we take those funds, put it into a separate account, or do we put it into something, I mean, two hundred eighty-one, say we sold this building for, and I'm just-
A million.
A million dollars. Then we've got roughly four years of that seven covered.
Exactly.
So, we're really looking only at a three-year deal before we reach what Jim was talking about with the name.
Well, and I, I would anticipate three years, because what I don't know about that building is that it's gonna be more expensive. You know, there's more janitorial, there's more electricity, there's eight air conditioners opposed to two. So, what I anticipate is that, you know, if he's saying that it's four million dollars for, you know, two eighty-one, I'm thinking it's gonna be more than that to cover our administrative costs.
Triple that cost.
Exactly. So, I'm thinking it would cover the three years and that would be perfect. So, that's where I'm loving being in now, is that whatever we finance, you know, if you wanna not finance the whole thing, and, so say, say the whole cost with everything, not bells and whistles, just everything you decide, is four point five million. And we have five hundred and seventy thousand in our fixture fees that we're gonna use towards this building. So, we take the five seventy, knock that off the top, we finance four million or just less, and when we sell the building, we use that to make our lease payments.
I like, I like the, the time you put into that, I think it makes, from my, from my lay perspective, it makes sense.
When you did once said you had some way to cover this thing.
I was wrong. You were right.
Please don't do that.
Well, what he's talking about, and I don't remember exactly, so I think he remembers it quickly, that, that about the cost of the lease payment was going to be the cost of the two percent of, on the increase per year. So, two percent, we have about five and a half million dollars of assessment fees, and so, two percent of that's about one hundred and ten, one hundred and twenty. And so, it's not gonna cover this.
He just wrote his notes, I just might be right.
Yeah. So, there's that.
So, it'll cover a third of it if we do it the way it's actually going.
Well, you know, again, it's, it's not intended that way. You know, the, the percentage increase was to increase our ability to do more CIP projects and funding, so, you know, we're at that, that point where, I'm not sure where one-on-one is, but, you know, we're trying to gather our funds for that and get that going. And then, once that project's done, then we'll have a lot of money to go towards other projects, but, you know, that's kind of our, our growth right there. You know, granted, we've done a lot in the last year with hiring two more sewer crews and cleaning all the sewers ourselves and, you know, we're-
Well, I, yeah, one more question. You know, we keep talking about a quarter million dollars in tenant improvement, and you keep talking about four and a half million dollars potential for this building. Do you know something that we don't know?
I know a lot.
About the building?
No, I mean about the building.
No, I, I don't know any of the cost at all. Mark and I spoke with Scott last week, and he's got a resolution from the financing corp. And you have to, the board has to adopt a resolution that has them not to exceed amount. And so, that not to exceed amount is not, you can finance anything less than it, but you would have to have a new resolution to finance anything more. And so, I, we were talking, I don't know if I'm thinking this, am I offhand go? Is it too late? Am I down the river on it?
You're already, you already-
I'm down the river. Okay, so, we were talking about timing. And for me, I would hate to, you know, liquidate a bunch of assets or anything to finance it ourselves. I understand the building's supposed to be available to close in April, okay? Financing with the board resolutions and some stuff, and, you know, closing and stuff is probably sixty days easily, okay? So, if I can get it financed without having to liquidate any of our assets because of timing, it's hardly worth it to liquidate or come up and transfer all the assets and cur all those costs. For a week or two weeks, that would just, you know, that's just not efficient and effective. So, I would love to be able to, you know, if we're gonna finance it, you know, time it so that the financing comes in it for closing. And if we're not gonna finance it, then, you know, we're gonna be, as Mark always tells you, you know what, happy packs for during the summer, and that's our high time, and, you know, now that we've got more staff, we have more consistent payrolls, and we have, you know, a lot more going on that I, you know, so I'd like to time the financing, I'd like to not have to front the money and then pay ourselves back. We can do that, obviously, but prefer not to.
Yeah, I just wanted to add this, you know, we have looked for years and years for a place to move to, one that actually provided for us what we needed. And there isn't anything in the city. We wanted to be in the city. And, and we've looked all kinds of places and nothing quite made it. And financially, we've considered the, the people that voted for us, you know, as far as what we're spending of their money. And I think this is the last, I think this is the important part, that we take something like this and work with it, because this is board. I mean, as far as location, location, as far as everything that we need, and our last ditch, really.
Okay, Scott, when is the lease up of the existing tenant, April, April what, it's April month? Do you know when the lease up in April?
End of April.
End of April? It's in the sixty days.
You know, that's just an estimate and stuff, and Mark and I are currently going through, you know, buying and selling houses and stuff. And to ask, you know, why do I keep throwing up random numbers? It's more, you know, to kind of get you guys to, you know, where your comfort level is, find out where that is. And Mark keeps telling me, well, there's a ten percent closing cost, there's ten percent. So, you know, the, the sale price is the sale price, that's not how much it's gonna cost us to close out, you know, the building and do all that. So, there's that in there on top of all the tenant improvements that we pretty much don't have any cost for. You know, I'm trying to think, I wish I would've looked, but I, I wanna say that lovely flagpole out there cost around eleven thousand dollars or something. I mean, you know, it's like, you'd be surprised, you know, it's that kind of thing.
The front lawn is a hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah, so, you know what I mean, I kinda don't wanna-
Were the property owners that now- Were the property owners that nail this, do you out by then or do we have to give them time?
No, their lease is up, they're out looking, they've got, been in the market for a long time and they've nailed their lease.
I thought we were giving them an extension.
We're giving them-
Do we have to give them a sixty-day notice since they've been there longer than a year?
Thirty-day notice is all we need, but we don't expect that they'll want that. Because, again, the tenant, there's, there's a building owner and it's a different entity from the tenant. And the tenant's moving. So.
Is that, Alan, is that the rule of thumb? I mean, I know that in residential, if they've been there more than a year, you gotta give them sixty days. I, I don't know about commercial.
I'm not aware of that rule.
Thirty-day notice.
My question, Wendy, what were you talking about, the ten percent closing cost? What is that?
Mark is telling me-
I mean, is that cost for us?
I'm gonna defer to-
I know, but we don't-
I'll defer to Jack on, on closing costs with the-
Well, closing cost, ten percent would be from a seller's perspective and that would, that would be high.
Okay, but what do we have to pay?
You just have to pay, you know, half the escrow fee.
So, how much is that? How much, what do you do?
I don't know, twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars. It's not, yeah. From, from the buyer's perspective, it's not a lot.
What about, what about origination fee? Is there an origination fee from the lender?
From, from this financing, yeah. The administrative fees will range between one to three percent.
Let's go into our lease payments.
That would be built into the payment, right?
Oh, okay. Okay, that's probably the ten percent that we were talking about.
And that could, could easily be-
Who, who would own the building, Mark? It'd be the, the financing corporation?
It would, it would be a lease purchase, just like any other type of capital lease where at the end of the lease term, the, the district would, would, would own it, but it would be uncovered. At the end of the lease term, it would become asset of the district. I mean, let me back up. We would show it as an asset of the district from day one because it qualifies as a capital lease from an accounting standpoint. Just we have the asset, we have the liability, we have the exposure things.
Let's not tell them the name of a, a JPA or anything.
No.
I guess, you know, my bottom line is, is that like four point five million, I don't know like all the costs and stuff like that, but, you know, where, you know, where are you guys going to be, you know? I'm not talking financing, I'm talking total cost of the building. You know, because whether it's, you know, four million that we finance, because that includes, you know, whatever it includes in it, and then we pay it down with, with, you know, five hundred and seventy thousand or, you know, where's your, 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 you know, your threshold for paying here?
But we won't know that until we, once it's, you know, once we're in, once the city, once, once we get hopefully approval from the city and everything, we can move forward with the hard cost.
Well, it brings us to another point, and that is, some of these, a few of these expenses, I, I feel needs to go to the owner or the seller. Asbestos remediation, with the windows, the water damage around the windows, the roof repairs. It isn't a huge number, but what's right's right and-
Is that about like fifty thousand, Scott?
I don't think it's that much.
No, I've got estimates on everything. It's, you take the recommendations that the inspector and then the recommendations from the asbestos, it's twenty-two thousand dollars. So, the building in general was in excellent condition. I mean, there are some items of wear and tear that need to be fixed. We asked for a reduction in price based upon the estimates that we got. They said, thank you, no. And, and that's kind of where it's sitting. And, you know, just to give you a little perspective on, you know, the history of this is that when we started looking in November of two thousand fourteen, we just looked at buildings that were, you know, five, over five hundred bucks a foot. And Scott and I looked at, you know, a piece of junk that was, you know, two hundred and seventy-five bucks a foot. So, the price that we're getting for the building is, is three hundred and forty a foot. And there was basically three relevant comps last year in Costa Mesa and they averaged out coincidentally at three hundred and forty bucks a foot. Now, the seller, since he put in the building in escrow with us on December twenty-third, I mean, they're getting hammered. People are like, this is a great building, you're late, you know, you didn't get there. And the attitude of the seller's been great up until like, like the last ten days. And they're like, now, we're gonna give you this extension to accommodate the city because originally it's gonna be on the sixteenth and now it's twenty-second. But if you guys are, aren't gonna, you know, it's time and we're not giving any deductions and we-
We might use the phrase of the normal-
I don't wanna, yeah. Yeah. Like, if you guys, if you guys aren't gonna perform, we're gonna put the building back on the market and we're probably gonna get, you know, at least a hundred or two hundred grand more because it is a great bill. I mean, it's the best building that we've looked at as terms of location, being on two major streets, being on a freeway off ramp, it's got the best signage on the corner. I mean, it's, it's on its own lot, there's no easements, there's no shared parking. It's just really, you know, from the seller's perspective, they might underpriced it a little bit. So, they're not gonna give any deductions even though I agree with Jim that would, you know, typically be fair and if they didn't have any other buyers and, you know, we'd probably get it. But in this, this heated seller's market, we're not gonna get it.
You know, I'm sorry, we're not actually holding them up, they're holding us up. We could've closed at any time. It's them and their tenants that are fining us.
Well, the seller's, the seller's waiting for us to remove contingencies.
If we're gonna talk about contingencies and negotiations, you need to get that in close session.
Oh. Mark, is, is what you need from the board for that resolution for financing, you need the number for the board meeting later this week?
No, what, what, what I would suggest is that, that was our original intent was at, at your meeting later this week, we would come forward with a resolution, which I've got. But recommend we don't do that now. Until you get your total costs ironed out, then we could come forward with what that maximum amount is that you would feel comfortable in financing. But just what the process would involve here is, once we determine what that amount would be, we would bring the resolution to you for consideration. And considering the, the timing of all of this, we would probably want to schedule a special meeting to, to do that so that we don't wait for another month to pass or two months to pass before that, that happens. Because the clock won't start ticking on the financing until you adopt that, that resolution. Once that resolution gets adopted, then the CSDA Finance Corp. will prepare all of the lease purchase documents and send the, the financing documents and send those to us for our review and for Alan's review. And Alan will need to prepare an opinion that, that everything is okay for you to proceed with the, with the financing. So, there's some things that have to happen along the way after you adopt, after you adopt that resolution.
In that process, I mean, it's gotta be pretty much boilerplate what they present on the agreement, right? So, it's not like they're gonna take a month to figure out how to do the documents. It should be ready to go once we do our resolution, right?
That's, that's correct. They say that they can do the lease purchase financings, they can do thirty to sixty days. It just depends on how many other deals they have stacked up, you know, who you're competing against.
My question, are you looking for the exact amount where we wanna borrow? Or like Wendy's suggestion, put in a high amount in the beginning, then we can always come in with a lower amount, that's what you're suggesting.
And, and can I just tag onto that question? Is, is really the question the board needs to determine is what are they politically comfortable with putting in that resolution? Not that they necessarily ask to finance that amount, but to have the contingency but for the shock value of whatever that number would be, that that would be a politically acceptable number?
That's exactly what it is.
Yes, that's-
Yeah, I think that's kind of what-
It's a not-to-exceed. So, what are you comfortable with not to exceed? And then, bottom line is, what are you comfortable with paying the building? So, say the, you know, it costs over four point five to, say it costs five million. Okay, well, we can buy that down with five hundred and seventy-five thousand. You may actually end up with all your improvements financing four point five. You know, politically, like you said, is that, is that a number you're comfortable with whether you finance that much or not? You know, is a five million dollar building in your future?
I don't either. I mean, it's closer when you estimate it. Because we don't have to do all of the improvements.
Well, like HVAC, for instance, I mean, it's in working condition right now. Am I right?
It's great condition.
There's no sense in replacing it until we have to, you know?
Right, there's a, I think, a five-year span on most of them, so.
I can tell you, my, ultimately, I was much above less than three million dollars and use all of the unfunded, all of, all of the five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars we have in, in, in this building. You know, this is an asset. I think going forward, if we get, the borrowing cost closer to two hundred thousand dollars, which would be the three million dollars, that, that's my comfort level.
You know, I understand that, just to have a rebuttal position. And one of the things I like about using the money that we get from selling this building over the next couple of years is, one, we've already adopted our budgets and we've set our sewer rates and I don't have that built in. So, we're gonna use up our reserves, which is gonna then take our investment levels down. And then, we're tighter during the summers when we actually have, you know, no cash flow anyway. So, we're gonna have, you know, assets that are gonna be, you know, have to be all liquid because we're gonna be paying bills. So, that's one of my concerns is without having all the numbers that we can-
Yeah, I think it's a comfortable level.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just, I'm just, I wanna, you know, everyone to have all the facts so that they, I'm not, it's whatever the board pleases. I just, that's just a different information.
And I suppose, Wendy, that you're, what you're suggesting there'd be an easy calculation of what that money would cost us to, to pay over four years, with, you know, some small amount, but it's gonna be an amount.
Yeah.
And then that might give a better comfort level or a less comfort level.
Yeah, the interest is not as huge because we hardly earn anything as it is. One of the other factors is that this building was paid for by past, you know, customers. And so, it's, you know, we'd cover their interest payments until the next budget adoption. And then, the future payments of that building are covered by existing. So, it's kind of a nice transition from, you know, people that already paid for the building to people who will be benefiting in the future.
We're gonna have a discussion on the CIP, future CIP costs. And you already have information in your head on that. So, at the board meeting, are we gonna discuss prioritizing the future CIP?
We were gonna probably do that in the next study session tomorrow.
Not this morning, no.
No, it will be soon.
Is the interest rate locked in with this lender, CSD or whatever it is?
No, not until you go to market. This is what they're seeing right now with, with market deals. No, not until you go to market.
You're asking to fix?
Well, no, 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 I, I know it'll be fixed, but, I mean, I'm assuming it's gonna be fixed.
Yes.
I'm just saying, there's, there is a little volatility in, in the interest rate. Possibly that much, maybe it could head down, downwards will go.
It, it could go down. You never know because they have to still look at the creditworthiness of the district. And the markets will take how, you know, your creditworthiness into account when they price this deal. This is a tax-exempt financing, so the rates are gonna be a little bit lower than they would be in a, in a regular commercial-type setting as well. That's, the tax-exempt aspect is one of the other reasons why there's that seven-year lag is because it's a tax-exempt deal.
Right, Scott, on the agenda, you're asking this to be an op, an action item? Do you want some approval?
You know, I, I think-
Or do you just need direction?
Well, I think, yeah, we, well, direct, yeah, directions. Do you want, do you wanna wait? Do you wanna wait till we come back with all these improvements and then give us a number to finance? Or as Wendy mentioned, you can tell them now what's your, what's your comfort level and we can just, you know, like Wendy says, if you wanna go four point five-
Well, personally, I, I know Bob's got his comfort. I'm not quite comfortable with a level in my mind yet. Personally, I'd rather wait to see more of the costs and have more of a concrete idea. That's just my, my thought.
No, I feel the same way. I, I think it'd be interesting because then we list here, as you were half financially and then we've got a vision.
And then you're gonna rate these as far as prioritize, prioritize all these items?
Yeah.
Because some of them at the bottom, you know, we're not gonna need to do maybe right away. Maybe we do it a year from now or, you know.
Well, the, I think it's important that Mark be given the okay to go at the four million dollar level. And then, when we get all the information, we can choose to go lower. We just can't choose to go higher.
Why can't we do that today?
That's what I'm saying.
No, no, no. Go into PlayStation, go through this and get a vision on what we're costing.
Well, we don't know the number. It's not gonna happen today. We don't know the number.
The only thing we can do in close session is discuss the, negotiate about the contingencies that the sellers might, because that would affect our purchase price, right? But we do have, if what the director, who is suggesting, if everyone were comfortable with four million, then that's the number that Mark is looking for.
That's another we plug with the resolution.
We're gonna have to back into it somehow, some way, right?
That's what I thought.
Right, if that, if that's where you want it to be, yes, then we, we could update the resolution to bring that forward if it's not too late to, to add that. I guess it's already on the agenda.
It's on the gym and we don't have the resolution or the, the timing's on the agenda.
Right. We could certainly bring that forward. It ma, it does make a lot of sense as well for you to figure out the cost of these improvements you want to do and then look at the whole package at once. The only little bit of delay on that would be the timing of getting those costs together and then the timing to schedule a special meeting so that you could adopt that, that resolution. But-
Personally, I'm more comfortable with that idea of getting these costs more lined up and like Jim said, prioritizing. We have to call a special meeting to do that. I'm, I don't wanna rush into this into Thursday night and that's just too quick for, for my thinking. And I probably agree. I would rather wait until we have this. Okay, so maybe we're gonna go with four million, we come back and go, oops. You know, I, I don't wanna do that. I wanna make sure personally that we're solid before we go forward.
But no, don't we have to pay money tomorrow?
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Of course, that's a question.
Well, can, so, can I hypothetically, so if we put in a resolution that says not to exceed four million dollars in financing and then we go forward, we have five hundred and seventy thousand that we apply towards the building. So, we know it's three point seven five plus some closing costs. So, that would knock it down to, say hypothetically, what, three point two?
Three point two.
And then, we could finance three point two, we could pull some additional amounts out of reserves, or we could pay for all the improvements ourselves.
We're talking about taking it out of reserves to pay for the improvements.
Yeah, yeah. So, that kind of sounds like where everyone is heading. Is that General Bar Park where people are heading, one of that?
Well, you know, but-
I'm not heading anywhere till I have the cost.
No, no, I'm just trying to, I just, I wanna go figure out how much money I might need to come up with and where I'm gonna do it.
I think they're saying that they're comfortable with the max of four million.
Yeah, financing.
Finance.
So, you know, you're talking about like three point two. And that's an area, right?
Well, I was kind of, yeah, going with what they wanted to be down around three. And so, in my mind, I was trying to, sorry, this is all about me, but I was trying to say, well, if we used all of our fixture fees towards the purchase of the building and then I had to come up with money for doing the improvements myself, then I wanted to, I was trying to figure out, you know, how much, where and how much I was gonna come up with. And if you wanted to even buy down the loan more than three point two, that's why I was trying to figure out like, you know, are you, I mean, a couple of people were talking about financing only three, so the big spend.
No, not one. No, no. I would suggest that we go with Mark for four million max now. And then, when we come to, ready for the loan, then we can determine the amount.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I would suggest.
We get more information.
Yeah, I would suggest that today in that open session, you know, that we give Mark the okay to do the four million.
I, I think the way I, I understand what you're saying, Mark, is if I'm, if I'm gonna be comfortable with a number and four million is the number, we've already committed, we've already committed almost six hundred thousand dollars out of our fixture fees.
Not yet, no.
Well, we haven't committed, I'm sorry. We discussed the fact that we could use almost six hundred thousand of our fixture fees towards the improvements. I mean, we're gonna take the, the four million and pay for the building and the closing cost, right?
Well, not really because we haven't decided what our total of costs are gonna be. We give Mark the okay for the four million, he gets that process started. Then when we come to make the loan, it could be a lot less, but we don't know that total until we meet again.
Or more.
You know, I understand that.
I, I don't think it would be more. I don't think we'd go over the board.
The board, the board can set limits. And Jim would ask staff to prioritize-
Uh, the board, the board can set limits, and Jim has asked, have to prioritize stuff, so it does not have to exceed whatever we want it to be.
One of the things.
I mean, we can leave the diocese out and we can leave a lot of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so I would, so that'd be enough. No, I like the diocese.
Yeah, I do, too.
I guess one of the things in my mind, I was trying to make it easier with the reporting for fixture fees, is it's much easier to use those in a lump sum. It's harder to report the fixture fee expenditures. If we're piecemealing it out for, uh, improvements, it's a little more effort. So in my mind, that's what I was saying, I was thinking we were gonna use that whole amount towards the building, and then, you know, we would either finance the, the modeling or come up with reserves.
Yeah, I said committed, that's definitely not the word that you should use, and I apologize.
So the election, you want Mark to come back on Thursday with the resolution for four million dollars? I would say yes.
Yeah.
I'll go on with that.
I won't be here.
Well, then you will be voting.
It'll be three, the, it'll either be four and up, and then three to one.
I mean, I think that's a smart.
Four votes get you in?
Four votes, yeah, do you need that?
Yeah, it's just a majority, no, there's no sort of majority that's, uh, that's required. Uh, well, I have one question, though. On the, on the timing of the, um, the improvements themselves, do, do we have any idea on, on, after the Planning Commission approves tonight, on when the, you would get your costs in for all the improvements?
Yeah, I will get by Thursday.
No, 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 I know, I, do you have any idea on how long that may take?
Within a month, within a month. I wanna get, yeah, I'm gonna talk to all of them, to consultants, and then start coming away.
And then, and then the, um, the April date that we're throwing around on the, on the close, is that, I, I know at one point in time, there was these four thirty-day extensions. Is that, is that gonna be the firm date, is when they would end up closing, or is it still, could be a couple of months after that?
It could be, it could be a couple of months out, yeah. So you gotta, gotta be ready, yes, and they'll give you thirty day notice, and then you'll.
Little still pick a grand opening day yet.
Right, yeah.
It's gonna probably take two or three months to do that, kind of approve all this stuff.
Oh, yeah.
That's fair, yeah.
So, you, you'll be able to go with four million.
I, that's entirely your, your direction.
I know, I know, we like to evaluate your thing.
My philosophy is, the, um, a building and improvements that you have are gonna be used for a number of years, and that you would want, uh, as much of those costs that you could be paid for by future, uh, assessments, uh, over the period that the asset's gonna be of benefit, and not taking any of those dollars out of reserves. So if it were me, I would add up all these costs, I would finance the whole thing, separate using all of the fixture fees.
So you'd take the heat off of us, turn it down, cycle to, after summer.
And then, and then I would do, yeah, exactly, then I would do the, the other thing on the lease payments is, when this building sells, one of the things that we have to talk about is this building, the bulk of the dollars of this building were purchased with fixture fees, and so they were restricted dollars. I'm assuming when it sells, they're probably gonna assume that restriction that they had from their original source, that's gonna be an Alan question. But they're gonna have to be used for building services, so it makes a lot of sense that, that they get, uh, that you use that as making your lease payments, uh, going forward, but.
Did you get the question he framed there? This building was originally purchased with entirely with fixture fees? Do they have to go, like, if we sold this building, does it have to go back into fixture fees, or is it essentially washed?
You know, I think it's still an asset, so I think you keep, it would follow, the asset would transform into another form, but it stays as a fixture fee.
I have a comment, I, I don't know if that's accurate, because we were at one point saving like a hundred thousand dollars a year, I don't know if that came out of fixture fees. It was like a sinking fund, so I don't know if that was a fixture fee.
You said some.
Yeah, we did.
When this building was purchased, there was about, we, we wiped out the fixture fee fund at that time, there was close to a million dollars in.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, we just have to go back and look at the records to see what, when this building sells, the first X dollars of the proceeds from that sale are gonna have to replenish fixture fees, because it was restricted by them. And it needs to, as Alan said, probably needs to retain that intended purpose.
We did have a light item.
We, we had a hundred thousand, I know, in here, saving per year when we were in the city, but I, I don't know if it was in the fixture fee account.
When I came on the board, there wasn't sinking, but when I left after I purchased the building, I don't remember any more.
Yeah, so we left the search, and I just took that after three.
I can look, I feel pretty confident about it. I think I booked the asset when I was here the first year, because we were supposed to move in July first, and it didn't finish until October, and so we were, like, renting more from the city. So I remember booking it, but I can double check and see the exact dollar now.
I don't know what, what funded one is, but I know that that's where we had started, in, I think, cities, in the good mood. I think it's like just something we said a minute ago about, um, your comfort level, if I'm paraphrasing, let me know, was to finance as much as we could, obviously.
Right.
So the four million is not a realistic number, it's four million.
I wouldn't think so. But, again, this, this is a.
I understand. I'm not, I'm not asking you to tell us how to make up our minds, but you sort of animated that four million is not a realistic number.
I think in looking, in looking at, uh, at the list, if you're at three million, seven fifty right now, I think that, giving, just saying that this, that this lobby was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think you're going to, even if you take the three, seven fifty, you're down to three, two, when you use your fixture fees, that only gives you eight hundred thousand dollars to do improvements. Given that this was a hundred and fifty, I think you're above a hundred thousand dollars in improvements here, if you did the whole thing. Don't know that, I'm just guessing.
So what's the direction then?
Let me ask a question, Alan, you said you're gonna research whether the sale of this building has to go back in the fixture fees?
Wendy's gonna research the source.
Wendy, that was your way of telling, we have more information.
Well, we can always go less than four million.
I know, Mark said maybe you should do more than four.
But I think Alan would probably agree, it's hypothetically, let's go worst case scenario, is this building was entirely purchased with fixture fees. And so we get a million dollars for this building, we put it back into the fixture fees, and we use the million dollars to pay the lease payments on the asset over the next four years, does that sound?
Yeah.
Three, four years?
And just, not to avoid having to research the question, but would the board have some thought about using it for something other than, um?
No, or for CIP or something. I'd say, I like, I like to have it painted on, I do too, she's in, say, for you.
What can it be, what can fixture fees be used for?
That's a, we're working on that, but it's, we have to do a study that justifies why you collected it, and the, the thing Wendy was talking about is in the future, if we do fixture fees and, it's for like, if you were to do it for a, a pump facility that only benefits one side of the city, then you have to apportion it, and it can only collect it from those folks. Whereas this was clean, because it was something that all, uh, patrons, residents enjoyed equally, and it made a clean, uh, exit.
Well, if, if we put a million dollars back in fixture fees, we got the same problem, you know, figuring out.
Well, it's the same solution, really.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a very easy solution.
We use it towards the lease payment, then it's, it's going back towards an asset that benefits the entire.
Very clean.
How long is the amortization on this law?
Uh, reckon in twenty years, the longest period that you could go.
Okay. So am I hearing a different direction now, that you wanna wait till we get these numbers, and then come back with Mark, with, with the finance, or you still wanna go with four million?
I'm ready, I'm ready to go with four million.
I probably would, and I don't think it's, at the end of the day, I don't think it's gonna be feasible to stick with four million. Depending on which way we go.
Coach, I'm hearing Freehold saying we, Freehold, four million, saying we wait till we get these numbers, and then come back, and we have a special meeting with, with, uh, what do you wanna finance?
And that's a month from now?
It didn't, it, it'll be sooner than a month, within a month. Soon as, soon as I can, I'm gonna, yeah, on this, right, you know, if you, you pull, I'll get on this case up.
I wouldn't know if you'll do this in a, in a day.
I don't know about that, um, there's a lot of different vendors, you're setting.
No, no, I mean, he does this for a living.
Oh, I know that, but.
What are you talking about?
But that means that you can't, you're an architect, and architect.
Oh.
That's what I think, I think about, maybe it was a ballpark.
Well, I mean, that's more important than nothing.
At least the ballpark is.
Okay.
All right.
Um, Mark, comfortable?
I'm good.
So the next one is going to close session, five minutes, and then on the direction of the board as far as down payment goes.
Okay. Then, uh, this point, I will adjourn us to a closed session regarding negotiations on the property at two ninety Pall Arena?
Am I in or am I out from the closed session?
Um, no, we stay, we stand, yeah.
Stand?